The board meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge? Oh, gosh, I don't want to knock it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Here.
Trustee Spurley?
Here. Thank you. We do have a quorum this evening. Mayor Brawley is unavailable. And two of our trustees are not here this evening, but we do have quorum and we'll continue with the people's business. Our next item is the public participation. And the first item is the introduction of Montgomery Monte Leo. Leo or Lee?
Leo.
Leo. Chief Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, law enforcement is ever-changing. One of the growing trends, of course, is to find ways of interacting with our public. A lot of places, a lot of police departments do it intuitively with apps and stuff like that, but I believe we need to go a little old-school here. We are bringing a lot of social workers into our field and a lot of touchy-feely things, and I couldn't think of a better way than to introduce you to one of our newest officers, and his name is Montgomery Leo. If I could ask Commander Pelco to bring him down? He obviously is a comfort dog. And it's going to be one of our newest ways to interact with our public. Everybody knows when this little guy walks in a room, it's just unconditional love, and he lights up the room. We're hoping to use this for several things, for victims of crimes, for serious incidents, just to get people to relax. And I'm going to tell you, every morning when this little guy sits on roll call, everybody smiles. So it's already working with our police department. So I would like Commander Pelco to go ahead and tell you about our program, and we'll take it from there.
Can I tell you about our program? So we adopted Monte last Monday, and he started training last Monday, and he's doing quite well. He has nine other friends at dog school and seems to love a basset hound because of her long, luscious ears. But in our station, he's very well-cared-for. I've received several texts from my teammates saying that this is the best thing that's happened. Which I agree, what are you saying? We've all been taking him on walks, and he's just part of our family. And we plan to do a lot more with him, but right now, he's just getting acclimated. He's gone to McDole Elementary for a staff meeting, which was Commander Diaz and I, along with Detective Sergeant Mayhew, were there. And this little buddy just sat up front, and he knew that we were his people, Commander Diaz, myself, and Detective Sergeant Mayhew. And he didn't stray from us until the end when that group of teachers wanted to interact. I think he could feel that. And that was only five days in our forever family, so I think it's good. I think some people who aren't even dog lovers at our station are realizing that he's our little family member. And it's a good thing. The village hall staff always want him to come over. I believe I spoke with all of our trustees last week via text message and kind of showed them off. Our new CSO and I went and mingled, and they all kind of stole him, and he licked all of them. So I guess he approves of them as well. So I think we're doing good. I know the mayor and his wife aren't here right now, but their pictures were hilarious with them. He really meshed in with the mayoral family. So pretty much, he's a celebrity. And he loves visitors, right? So what did I miss?
Then you were probably on this project for about a year. She nagged me and nagged me and nagged me until I told her if she could figure out a way to do it without spending any village funds. And he is a rescue. He is a litter of nine, I believe?
No, he had seven. There were seven total. They were all boys. The mama was brought into Kendall County Animal Control. She was running loose, I believe, in Oswego in Kendall County. When she was taken into the shelter, they were unaware that she was pregnant. They thought something wasn't right. She wasn't really eaten. And suddenly, she gave birth to seven. And she also, hey, lovey! She also didn't really care for her puppies. So they're not sure if she was a first-time mom or if she was just done having puppies. So he got tossed around a bit along with the other ones. But we did meet his brother from the litter the other day, as my daughter recognized him at a park. So we had to go over and make friends. So they've all gone to very good homes. And yeah, the part about getting the community support, I do have to say, and I invited Ian Renke from Pet Supplies Plus. I reached out to them right away because, as Chief said, we did not budget for this. It just kind of fell in our laps. And they were wonderful. They're donating food for his life. And when we go in there, it's like they're, all the employees know him. And then Orchard Animal Hospital, as well as helping us with discount on services there. So that's cool. And then Sonia, how do you say her last name? Ulrich?
Sonia's a good dog?
Yeah. I remember her last name's Ulrich, out of Oswego. She does training, and so she gave us complimentary dog obedience training. So he's in puppy preschool right now. And he's a star. He doesn't know much, so he's cute.
He's eyeballing all of us now.
We're working on it. The potty training, you know, I need everyone to be patient because when you're in a kennel like that, they have so many workers and they use the puppy pads. So that's why I'm holding him, because I don't want him to pee on everyone's carpet. But we're working on it, and he is starting to go to the door, like when he's got to go. It's just recognizing those cues. And when you're not a dog person, but you're learning to be a dog person, it's kind of funny to see the guys in office or in uniform saying, "Come on, we got to go outside." And they're taking him, but it's a team effort. And I think he's all of ours, right? That's all I got.
And that is Montgomery Leo, aka Monte. Thank you.
Oh, and he's really like badge number .5.
He'll be at the PD if you want to see him a little more intimately. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number two on our agenda tonight, we are swearing on one of our newest police officers. So I'd like Kevin to come down here, please. I'd like to introduce you to Kevin Carner. He's originally from Homewood, Illinois. Graduated from Homewood-Flossmore High School. After graduation, he went out to Monmouth College, where he played football for four years. Graduated, and I believe, exercise science, right? He began his career with the Melrose Police Department, where he's been for the last year and a half. Before becoming a police officer, he was a personal trainer, fitness coach. He's here tonight with his wife Alexis and their two sons, Luke, who's two and a half, and Bryce, who's just six months. A few other family members here. His mom, Jane, husband Gary, dad Kurt, girlfriend Laura, his mother and father-in-law Angie and Mike. They're sitting right here. Some of his hobbies include coaching, working out, playing sports, spending time with his family, playing guitar, golfing, fishing, and time for family walks. Squeeze all that in, do you?
That's right.
All right. Madam President, if you wouldn't mind swearing our newest officer.
Raise your right hand and point it after me, please. I, State Manager.
Hi, Kevin Carner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And that I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge
The duties of police officer
The duties of the police officer
To the best of my ability
And if he can have his wife Alex come down here. We do have a tradition where a loved one pins on their badge without maybe sticking them?
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
And then I'd like all the other officers to come down and action. You'd like us here? Okay. Everybody stand right here in front of the podium. Tall guys in back.
Why did they put the desk behind them like?
All right, thank you.
Chief? While the entire, most of the police department is here, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you. About two weeks ago, we had inclement weather. And I think they've classified it as an EF0 tornado come through. And there was damage in downtown Montgomery. And Trustee Marisak and I were down there probably about 20 minutes after it happened. And it was inspiring to see the police department coordinating with Montgomery Fire, coordinating with Public Works to make sure everyone was safe and that the damage was being assessed and that it was starting to be cleaned up. So thank you to the Montgomery Police Department. Thank you to the Village of Montgomery Public Works Department. Thank you to the Montgomery Countryside Fire Protection District because you guys were all busting your asses, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys' support, too. It's always been nice. Our last portion of my piece of the agenda this evening is to welcome back Commander Ishmael Diaz. Ish, come on over. Ish, of course, was gone for 10 weeks to Quantico, Virginia, at the Federal Bureau of Investigation National Academy. He was a proud graduate of the 285th session. We thought it was proper him to come to tell you what he's done to spend our taxpayers' money the last 10 weeks. Go ahead, Ish.
Thank you. So the first thing I want to start off with, before I really get into my presentation, I know you guys are really busy, so I'm going to try to keep it as brief as I can. Obviously, trying to squeeze in 10 weeks of what I did is a little bit difficult to do in a short amount of time. But I'd also like to thank everybody who made this possible. The chief is a big part of the reason that I was able to go. Obviously, the trustees, the mayor, and the village administrator. So I do appreciate the opportunity given to me to go to this prestigious training and join the ranks of some people, such as the chief of police, our deputy chief, are also graduates of the FBI INA. And we also have another person in attendance who's a graduate of FBI INA. So obviously, I'm in good company with them. And just seeing the caliber of people that get to attend this training is obviously a testament to what the training entails. So just a little bit about the FBI National Academy. It's a 10-week training program for law enforcement officers. It's a program designed to provide education, opportunities to network with people from throughout the country and throughout the world. It's obviously regarded as one of the premier law enforcement training programs in the world. In my particular session, we had 247 students representing 47 states, I believe, 20, yes, 28 countries, four military organizations, and five federal agencies. And obviously, it's an honor to have attended. As you can see, since 1935, there have only been 54,154 law enforcement officers who have graduated from the FBI National Academy. So it's obviously a prestigious and an honor to have graduated from that. So just a little bit about the curriculum that I, the classes that I had to take. Obviously, one of them was the Fitness and Law Enforcement. The classes that I took, there's pretty much a catalog of classes that you can choose from when you attend. You had to take five classes, five electives, that I got to select. The one that everybody does is the Fitness and Law Enforcement. But I chose Psychology of Leadership, Emotional Intelligence, Advanced Communication for Law Enforcement Executives, Seminar in Managing the Law Enforcement Image, and Leading at-Risk Employees for Executives. So when I decided to select my classes, I chose all graduate-level classes. So what that ended up doing, I did get, all of these classes are accredited through the University of Virginia. So I did earn 17 college credits towards a master's, if I so choose to continue to do that. So what are the objectives of the National Academy? It's meant to enhance skills and knowledge. So you get trained in the latest techniques, technologies, and best practices to utilize out on the field. It's to build relationships. Obviously, with people coming from all over the country and the world, you get the opportunity to network with different law enforcement personnel from everywhere. You build those connections, and those are invaluable when you have to work multi-jurisdictional cases. Anybody in here who's in law enforcement can tell you that if we were to call Chicago PD to try to make something happen, it's almost impossible if you don't know somebody who's embedded within that agency. I had the opportunity to be in class with the captain from Chicago, so I know that I can count on him. If we needed something from their agency, I could call him directly. So that's a huge thing, is building those connections. Shortly after we graduated, there was a case in Pennsylvania. They were looking for a stolen car that was involved in a crime. They had a hit on it out of Miami-Dade. They just happened to be in the same academy class as I, and he just called the guy down in Miami-Dade and said, "Hey, can you help me out here?" And within hours, they had located this vehicle. So obviously, those connections are important. But the number-one thing is to strengthen the public trust. Obviously, all of us in law enforcement understand that the number-one priority for us is to ensure that the community trusts what we're out there doing. And what this academy does, it really tries to emphasize the knowledge so that we have competent leaders out there, ethical, who are making decisions that are going to be decisions that are in the best interests of the community. So I just wanted to touch a little bit on some of the specific classes. So one of them that I really enjoyed was Managing the Law Enforcement Image. And this is one of the classes that I really enjoyed because it really stressed that as a law enforcement agency, and even for a village, it's up to us to really run how our image is put out there in the media, especially nowadays with so much that we can do on social media. We can really put our message out there very quickly without having to use the media as the middle person. We can put our message out there. As a matter of fact, with the things that I learned through this class, I've already spoken with Christina about getting together with hers, since she's our communications person here. And we're going to kind of go over some of the things that I learned there and see how we can incorporate that into what we do as part of our imaging strategy here with the village and obviously with the police department. And as part, I put this picture up because this is Gail Pennybacker on the left. She used to be a reporter with the Washington Post, I believe. And one of the things they do in this class is they give you a scenario, and you're expected to go up there and get interviewed, and you have to come up with answers, like right on the spot. And basically, you use the messaging bases that are outlined up there to kind of give your answer and to stay within message without letting the reporter, I guess, drive the narrative. You put your message out there the way you want to put it based on the steps shown. Leading at-Risk Employees was another class that I took that really emphasized, you know, taking care of the people that we're supervising and trying to identify those signs of stress management, PTSD, addiction, divorce, suicide prevention, and awareness. And this is one of the things that I feel very strongly about. And I actually had the opportunity to talk to a recent grad who actually has a degree in health and wellness. And she's in the audience today, too. So one of the things that I'm working to do is to put together a program for our officers where we really take care of the officers before that traumatic incident happens, before they get to the point where, you know, it turns into PTSD, where we're really teaching them how to take care of the mind and the body before it gets to that point where they experience that traumatic incident. And, you know, once you get to that point, it's a little bit harder. But if we teach them some coping techniques, you know, we may be able to help them out. I'm sure Gabby's going to do an awesome job helping us out with that. So I really appreciate the help. The other one, Psychology of Leadership. I really enjoyed this class because one of the things they had us do was read the book Man's Search for Meaning. I don't know if anybody's ever read that book, but it really emphasizes how, you know, for you to find your why. What is your why? What is your purpose? And I think for us in law enforcement, we deal with so many things out there and a lot of bad incidents that occur. I think as we progress in our career, sometimes we lose focus on what our why is. And I think if we can all really step back and think about why we came into this profession, it would help us a little bit to be, to better control our emotions out on the street and better identify any triggers that we may have that impact how we interact with the community. One of my favorite parts about the FBI National Academy was participating in the International Partnership Program, which it's a volunteer program where you volunteer to partner with one of the international partners. I volunteered. You don't know who you're going to get. But basically, the National Academy, it's a dorm-room type, so you share a bedroom or a room. So I ended up getting an international partner from Chile, which was really interesting. And as part of the program, we had almost bi-weekly meetings where we would get together and discuss how policing is in different countries and seeing how we can help each other out. So that was one of my favorite parts of the academy, is just that interaction with police officers from different parts of the country. It was very valuable to me. Personal takeaways. There was a couple of things. Every single day, as you're walking to cafeteria, you have to pass this wall. And on the wall, it's the mission statement, "To protect the American people and uphold the Constitution of the United States." And that, to me, is really what it all boils down to in law enforcement. That's really what our job is. I know here in Montgomery, we have a really good mission statement, but this just boils it down to the very basics of why we are here. And the second one, as you're going to class, there's a hallway. You walk down some stairs, and it's the knowledge, the courage, and integrity. So you see that every day as you're walking to class. And to me, the most important thing for me is the courage part of it because a lot of times, we have a lot of courageous people in here who are willing to go to the gunfire. But when they talk about courage here, they're talking about the courage to do the right thing for the right reasons, which I think is really important in law enforcement because a lot of times, we have to make decisions that are not always the most popular, but we have to make them based on what's going to benefit our community the most. Because at the end of the day, we're here for the community. That's why we are here, to protect the community. And we always have to keep in mind how our actions are going to impact that community. So that should always be at the forefront of why we do what we do. So with that, that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Anyone have any questions for Commander Diaz? I would just like to say congratulations. It sounds like it was an amazing experience.
Well, it was. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry if I took too long. I apologize.
You're fine. Thank you so much.
Just a quick five minutes. So as you know, part of one of our major pillars in our department and the village is professional education. Not only does three of your command staff members at the police department hold the certification of the graduates from the FBI Academy, but all of our command staff members have graduate degrees, advanced degrees in the master's level, all graduates. And because we here at the police department and the village believe professional education is key. It's one of the pillars we believe in. So with that, I thank you for your time. Sorry, that all took a half an hour, but thank you. Appreciate it.
It's no worries. Very pleased to have you all here. And it's always nice to see our folks that are able to come in off the street and support their fellow officers when they're getting sworn in. And also to hear Commander Diaz's presentation. I really appreciate it.
So not to leave her out, Liz is an hour ago. She will go hopefully inside the next two years.
Thank you.
That will make sure all of them are gone. And it would be beyond me to say we have another graduate sitting in the office. Dwight is a Kev class 209. So it just shows you that this does lead to bigger, better things for our officers.
Fantastic. And I actually was going to recognize Sheriff Dwight Baird was here this evening. Appreciate you being here. I know you're here to support your wife this evening, but it also just happened that we had a lot of law enforcement activities this evening. So it's nice to see you and glad that you are here this evening, so. All right. So we will move on to our next item of the public participation portion. And that would be the Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month for this month in April. So just to give you a short introduction, with us this evening is Heidi Baird. Heidi is the Business Development Manager for Earthmover Credit Union, Vice President of the Greater Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce, a supporter of both CASA of Kendall County and CASA of King County, and a foster parent herself. As a foster parent, Heidi has created a temporary safe home for 43 children, many of whom live in emotionally and physically abusive situations. Thank you, Heidi, for being here this evening and highlighting the critical initiative of child abuse awareness. So I'm going to take a moment to read the proclamation. Whereas children are vital to the future success, prosperity, and quality of life in the Village of Montgomery, children are also the most vulnerable members of our community. And whereas every child is entitled to love and care in a healthy nurturing environment, free from abuse and neglect, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, and it is essential to raise awareness of the courage it takes to raise a child and the need for all families to have access to the support and knowledge which child-rearing demands. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and physical conditions contributing to a child's development and provide young residents a safe and stable environment in which to grow. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the community partnerships created between child welfare professionals, law enforcement agencies, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, families, and residents. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as an engaged community to increase awareness about child abuse and make every effort to promote the well-being of children and families to create a strong, stable, and nurturing environment to help them thrive. And whereas April is the National Child Abuse Prevention Month and is a time to acknowledge the essential role of our community, excuse me, to acknowledge the essential role our community has to prevent child abuse and neglect and to promote the social and emotional well-being of Montgomery's children and families. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, hereby proclaims April 2023 Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Village of Montgomery. Oh, my goodness. Heidi, I have an actual proclamation for you here. If you wanted to invite anyone down, we'll take a photo.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, on behalf of both King and Kendall CASAs, just share how much this really means. There are so many children that are affected every single day in many ways that we can't even fathom abuse and neglect, and once it hits a child, can last with them forever. I've heard many statistics that PTSD that a child endures from the abuse neglect that they have to, that they go through will last a lifetime and can be two to three times more powerful than the people who have served overseas in any of our wars. So just thank you so much for this. I wanted to say thank you as well, on behalf of my team that's here. I couldn't do this without a supportive network of people, and that is every day showcased by Earthmover, but then last but not least, my husband, who is the biggest support that I could ever ask. So thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate what you do. So moving on to the next item, we have the Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Public Hearing. So I will open the hearing. If anyone has any comments, they can come down to the microphone. Have we had any comments submitted?
We have not.
Okay, I will close the public hearing for Fiscal Year 2024 Budget, the public hearing. Okay, moving on to our final item of public participation. If we have anyone who would like to address the board, I know we have one person, Ron D., if you would like to come down.
Thank you for the opportunity. Madam President, members of the board, village staff, general public, my name is Ron D. I have an office at 4136 Blanch Road in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania. My primary responsibility is raising money for the American Red Cross. I have a small staff. Last year, we raised $5 million for the American Red Cross. This year, we hope to continue to grow and raise over $6 million for the American Red Cross. We do this by locating Green Drop mobile donation offices throughout the country. We started in 2012. We have 56 mobile donation offices located between New York City and Honolulu, Hawaii. Every time we open, it generates more residential donations of household goods. Anything in your house less than 50 pounds that doesn't have a liquid, we take donations in these Green Drop mobile donation offices that you see in front of you. We generally locate in dense community suburban shopping centers. The reason I'm here with you today is Menards has asked us to locate Green Drops in 12 other suburban shopping centers in the Chicagoland area. They have asked us to locate here in Montgomery. The last page in your deck here shows an area within the parking lot at Menards that they would like us to locate in. These mobile donation offices are self-contained with their own restroom and an office and HVAC. We have two full-time, uniformed employees that work here all day from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In the evening, when we're not there with staff, we have six internet-connected security cameras on these mobile donation offices. If anything were to get dropped off in the evening when we're not open, a security company calls us and we send a truck immediately there. Since we've been open in 2012, we've never been asked to leave a location by a landlord or a municipality. My most sacred job is to make sure that these locations are clean and organized and safe. We become a community asset in the communities that we operate in. Unfortunately, many of the communities that we look to locate in do not have this use defined in their zoning code. That's true here in Montgomery. This particular use, as it's defined and as you see in your presentation, is not defined in your planning and zoning code here, and therefore, we were given a firm. Unfortunately, this is not allowed here. I'm here to ask for your consideration to see if there's any way we can possibly figure out a method to locate Green Drop to raise money for the American Red Cross in Montgomery at the Menard Shopping Center. That's my presentation.
Thank you. So obviously, we don't have an exact answer for you right now. We'll have staff take a look at that, and we have your information, so we'll be able to reach back out to you and let you know what we find out.
My cell phone number is there. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call.
Okay. Thank you for coming by this evening. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being patient with all of our activities.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other members of the audience? Anyone online? Anyone submit anything?
Nobody submitted.
Okay. We will close that portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. I will read the items on the consent agenda and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the March 27, 2023 Village Board Meeting, accounts payable through April 10, 2023, in the amount of $1,7,645.06. Accounts, excuse me, account receivables for March 2023, building report for March 2023, water production report for March 2023, and appointment of Deputy Chief Sanders as the Emergency Management Agency Coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisack. Take the roll, please. Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes. That carries. Thank you. Moving on to the items for separate action. Sorry, gang, I'm going to get here. Sorry. I wasn't ready for this. Running show tonight, this evening. Okay. We have Ordinance 2003 Adopting the Operating and Capital Improvement Budgets for Fiscal Year 2024, and Director Maluski, please.
So before the, thank you, Madam President, before the board tonight is the first reading of our Fiscal Year 2024 Recommended Budget. We did issue a revision on Friday that everyone should have available today in their packets. So just to reiterate, revenues are $59,698,834, and expenditures are $59,635,172. So I am happy to answer any questions that any of the board members may have at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Maluski? Okay. This is first reading, so it will be on our next meeting, our next meeting's agenda. Moving on to Item B, Ordinance 2007 Disconnecting Territory from the Village of Montgomery, Jericho Road. Director Act.
Thank you. As part of our boundary agreement with the City of Aurora, the right-of-way along Jericho Road in front of Aurora University is to be disconnected from the village and dedicated to the City of Aurora. One of the main purposes for this was cleaning up the boundary line. Kind of goes in and out, so in order to clean that up, we'll be disconnecting parts of it, so the entire Jericho right of will be going to the City of Aurora. So we have the plot of disconnection attached here for you, and once this gets adopted, we'll be able to get that recorded, and then we'll be able to move on to the next step of getting it dedicated over to the City of Aurora.
Any questions for Director Act? Okay, this is also first reading. It will be on a future meeting.
Okay, with this being on consent?
I would prefer not to put anything on consent since we have two trustees not here this evening, but thank you. Moving on to Item C. That would be Ordinance 2006 Establishing a Date for and to Approve a Public Notice of a Public Hearing on the Proposed Blackberry Creek Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Program. Director Act, yes.
In accordance with the state statute regarding TIF districts, we do have to adopt an ordinance that adopts the public hearing notice that'll be published in the paper and set the public hearing date. That will be May 22 of 2023 here at Village Hall. It also sets the date for the Joint Review Board Meeting, which will be held in advance of the public hearing, and that will be held on April 21 at 2:00 p.m.
Any questions for Director Act? Okay, hold on. Do you have any motion?
Just for clarification for public, this is the proposed TIF that is to the west of Orchard Road, the Hammond property?
So it's a west of Orchard Road, north of Route 30, adjacent to Stewart Sports Complex.
Thank you.
And we are requesting waiver of first reading on this.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisack. Take the roll, please. Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes. And that carries. Thank you. Moving on to Item D, Ordinance 2002 Amending a Comprehensive Fee and Deposit Schedule for Building and Development and Creating New Sections 1 through 12 in the Village Code of Ordinances. And this is second reading, so we will be taking action this evening.
Yes. At our last meeting, I elaborated that our last major update of our building and development fees was back in 2011. We have conducted a fee analysis comparing our fee schedule with comparable communities and surrounding communities, as well evaluating our staff time that it takes to process permits, as well as some of our increasing fees related to third-party consultants that we use, also looking at trying to simplify some of our fee schedule as well and addressing some new types of permits. So we are proposing some changes that you reviewed at the last meeting, but at that meeting, there was some concern about the annexation fee that was proposed to be increased to $1,000, saying that this could disincentivize people with smaller lots, residential lots along like Montgomery Road from annexing to the village with that higher cost. So a couple of options. The ordinance before you has the fee structure in its original form that came before you, but if the board would like to change the annexation fee, one option could be to have a $600 fee for lots less than one acre, addressing the concern about the the smaller lots, and that would be in line with some of our other zoning fees, and then it would be the $1,000 for lots that are one acre or more. The other option could be just to keep it consistent with all of the other fees and keep it at $600, so it's similar to special uses and variances. Also brought up was what the, what the purpose of the fees was, and again, I think the main thing was to look to see if we were in line with other communities and also to ensure that we're covering our costs as much as possible in related to processing permits and planning and zoning cases.
Trustee Marisack, this was something that you brought up. Do you have any follow-up comments?
I appreciate staff reviewing it and presenting some options. I I agree with the 600 fee for lots that are less than an acre. I feel like that's consistent. It accomplishes what staff's looking for in getting the cost cover for these other annexation agreements, but yet it doesn't punish the smaller residential lots. So I would, I would make a motion to approve it with that.
Can I get a second on that before we continue discussion?
I was just discussing, I, I mean.
Oh, I thought you made an actual motion.
No, I mean, I would support it and make a motion to approve that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
If so, if everyone was in agreement.
I'm sorry. If someone else has a comment, I had something that went right out of my head.
I'm good with 1,000. I mean, if it's $1,000 is the fee to cover our costs, then I think that's the purpose of these fees, is to cover our costs. I don't know, does it matter if less than an acre or more than an acre? Is it less of a cost if the, or do we have the, we have to perform the same task, correct? If this is, whether if it's less than an acre or more than an acre, or?
Generally, yes, it's the same. You're still writing staff reports, you're still evaluating an annexation agreement, you're still getting things prepared for for mailings and notices. So a lot of the effort is the same. I think maybe the difference is is more the complexity of the project. So typically, when you get into a larger project, is when it's going to be a little bit more complex, so it's going to be usually on a larger lot, where there's going to be perhaps a lot of back and forth regarding an annexation agreement, and that's where it probably takes up a little bit more staff time in those regards. You're not typically going to see that in a smaller lot situation, but we did have the State Street House that did go through the process and was recently annexed by the village, and that would take some time to go through just because we were dealing with a situation where it was a building permit that had been issued in the county and then was going to be finalized coming into the village and tapping onto village water. So that one, we just, you know, wanted to make sure we were covering the different outcomes that could happen with that.
So in that case, it was probably closer to the $1,000 for the.
I'd say there's probably, yeah.
When we are having, or when we're getting to this point where we are annexing individual lots, or maybe it's a single-family home, something like that. Is it primarily that homeowner is reaching out to us and saying they want to come into the village, or are we reaching out to try to clean up boundaries and, you know, get people into, on our water system?
Yeah, it's going to be more them individually reaching out, probably because they want to tap onto the village's water.
And I would imagine that would probably increase once we start getting closer to Lake Michigan water.
Potentially, yeah.
I would think so. Steve, do you have something?
I agree with what Trustee Marisack said. I will, I would second this motion with this as written in this ordinance with the reduced fee on the certain lot size.
Trustee Spurling, do you have?
I was just initially curious when I was, that's why I asked you the question. Are we seeing that many requests to annex into the village at this point? Do you have an idea of how many we're getting per year?
So really, we're not getting, as far as those smaller lots, like in the area along Montgomery Road, I mean, I've been here for two years, and we've gotten one actual petition, and then we've had a couple of inquiries, but it hasn't progressed more than just inquiries and moving forward towards actually annexing, so.
So do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion with the amendment to reduce the fee to $600 for lots less than one acre and $1,000 for lots one acre or more.
I'll second that.
Move by Marisack, second by Youngerman. Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a good point that you raised, so I appreciate that. Okay, the next two items go together. However, we will take action on just the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on PZC 2023-002 Variation Lot 7 of Ogden Hill. That would be the proposed Starbucks. And then Item F is Ordinance 2004 Granting Design Standards, Setback Parking and Landscape Screening Variances from the Village of Montgomery Unified Development Code. Starbucks Lot 7 of the Ogden Hill Commercial Subdivision. The ordinance is first reading, so that one will go on a future meeting, but let's talk about them. Director Act.
Yes. So the petitioner's proposing to locate the Starbucks. It's going to be on the vacant lot that's between the Mavis Tire and Earthmovers Credit Union on Hill Avenue. They are Zone B2 over there, and drive-throughs are considered a permitted use in the B2 district. However, for this particular lot, for this development, they do need several variations, including setback variations that would allow a canopy to encroach into the side yard over their drive-through, as well as to allow their trash enclosure to be located in the front yard. That would be the Hill Avenue-facing side. Again, this has frontage only on Hill Avenue, but it is accessed by the internal drive for the Ogden Hill Shopping Center. So most of the building is oriented closer to that internal access drive where people would actually be coming in and then facing to the south as people are coming through and accessing it from the parking lot that would be on the south side of the street. They're also requesting some variations regarding design standards specifically related to building materials. It's a slightly more modern look for this one, so they're using a lot of EPIS and utility brick. So you've got the elevations in your packet. Additionally, they're proposing to provide that principal entrance, again, on that southern side facing the parking lot rather than Hill Avenue, which is the front yard, which is where they're technically supposed to be facing. So they're asking for relief from that, as well as the transparency requirement. Again, we require front elevations to have a minimum 60% transparency. Again, with that being sort of the back of the house, so to speak, they've got minimal transparency there facing Hill Avenue, so they're requesting relief from that requirement. Additionally, they need some, a variance from some of our parking requirements specifically rated to driveway width. Since this is a drive-through and it's going to have a one-way traffic movement through it, they're asking to have a 24 to 25-foot-wide entrances and exits so that you can have the stacking as. so that you can have the stacking as well as the bypass lane to be able to get by and not be holding up traffic on that exit if somebody needs to make a left-hand turn or being kind of stuck by the drive-through, the drive-through stacking. Although they are meeting their minimum stacking requirements, so that's, that's fine.
I just have a clarifying question related to that. Is the drive variance, because they're going wider, correct?
Yes.
So they're actually requesting to make it.
For one way.
Yes, they're making it a little bit wider.
Exactly.
Fire department wouldn't have issue with that. So, okay, thank you.
Uh huh. And then they're also requesting some landscape variances related to hardscape being covered by tree canopy. They're reducing the area required as 40%, and they will not be meeting that requirement, as well as reducing the number of trees to be planted in their perimeter parking lot area. They'll only be providing five trees versus the one for 30 that's required. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing last week on the 6th and did recommend approval with conditions that are outlined in the ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Unfortunately, developer was not be able to make it tonight. He had a conflict. But he will be able to make it to the other, to the next meeting if you do have any questions that you need him to address.
Just to clarify, this will only be a drive-through or they're not going to have space inside to go in and help people hang out at the Starbucks?
Right, exactly. So it won't have like an indoor seating area. So you can still go in and order your coffee, like use the mobile app and have the drive-through, but it is their smaller and they call it their drive-through concept. So it won't have the kind of seating area in there.
And then the trash area, because it's, this is, to me, this is just kind of an odd lot. It's unusual, I guess I should say it's an unusual, not odd. The trash, it looks like it's still going to be, um, there, there's going to be some type of landscaping around it that's sort of.
So still meeting the landscaping requirement around it. It's just that it's located technically in the front yard and that's not allowed by code, so.
Okay. And I understand why they want to, uh, not have the amount of trees that we normally would require because then it's going to be really difficult to see that it's Starbucks. I mean, I think once people know it's there, it's going to be just a rock in business. But at this point, with the trees there, people might not see it right away. And of course, I want.
And that was their concern, yes.
Come to our Montgomery Starbucks on this side of town, so, okay.
There was actually a discussion at Planning Commission about the signage requirements because they want this, you know, again, that hillside would be the front, which would be the one requiring the sign. And they're actually looking to put the sign on the other side. That perhaps we may be coming across a signage variance request so that they could signage both sides. So you could see it from hill.
Right.
That it's a Starbucks as well as the back lot, so that may, I, it was a very good question brought up.
Okay. Any questions for Director App?
Would you like a motion for the, to accept the recommendation of Planning and Zoning on PZC 2023-002?
Yes, I would love that. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Marisack, second by Guyer. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And as I said, the ordinance is first reading, so that will be on a future meeting for separate action. Okay, moving on to the next two items. Again, we have a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission on PZC 2023-003, Major Adjustment to a PUD, Lot 2 of Jericho slash Orchard PUD. And then Ordinance 2005, Amending a Special Use Planned Unit Development in the Village of Montgomery, Lot 2 of Jericho slash Orchard PUD. That one is first reading, so we will not take action on item H. But again, let's talk about them. Director App?
Thank you. So the petitioner is proposing to change the PUD. The previous PUD had established building elevations for the proposed retail center. At that time, it was proposed for the Ricky Rockets to go in at the, would that be the southwest corner? Ricky Rockets did not move forward, so we have the gas and wash there now. Obviously, the aesthetic for the gas and wash is a little different than it was for Ricky Rockets. The retail center was designed to complement the Ricky Rockets. So now they're looking to amend those elevations, to have elevations that better complement the gas and wash. So the Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing on the 6th and did recommend approval of the amendment for these new elevations with conditions.
So this is, to clarify, this is just, they're just changing the elevation.
Strictly an elevation change, yes.
All the nuts and bolts are the same. It's just to make it more conducive to the look of the gas and wash.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Yeah, I like this design better.
Yeah. Looks very nice.
It does seem to be the general sentiment, yes.
Uh, would you like a motion to accept? So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? Moved by Youngerman, second by Guyer. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. We have accepted the recommendation of the Plan Commission. And again, the ordinance on item H is first reading. No action this evening. Will be on a future agenda for separate action. Next up, we have the award of a three-year contract for janitorial services to Vega Building Maintenance in the amount of $76,032. Director Wolf?
Thank you. So just to recap for the board, the village has historically contracted janitorial services for multiple village facilities, which consist of Village Hall, Public Works, and the Police Department. We did take a new approach this year at our RFP, changing some of the contract language within the document to stipulate some of our after-hours cleaning to be conducted during working hours and also upping the routine cleaning services from three days a week at Village Hall and two days a week at Public Works to five days a week. This also incorporates the new Public Works facility, which is being constructed and will require these services as well. As you can see, this item is roughly $20,000 under the budgeted amount. It is a three-year contract, so staff will be making the appropriate changes in the outlying fiscal years to accommodate this contract. As always, we have language built into the RFP that if the work is unsatisfactory, that we can terminate that contract at any point in time. So if there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Director Wolf, sorry?
Were we paying before?
Roughly $41,500, uh, $41,500 roughly.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Guyer, second by Marisack. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, item J. This is for the purchase of office furniture for the Police Department's new records area from KI Furniture. Director Wolf?
Thank you. So again, as a recap, the public, or I'm sorry, the Police Department facility, when it was constructed, was constructed to accommodate our own internal dispatch center. In roughly 2013, I believe it was, the dispatch center was disbanded and the village contracted with KenCom Services. And so that facility, or that area within the facility has been used for a multitude of different things throughout the course of, of that time. Since Chief Smith approached me with revitalizing that area to accommodate the needs of the records staff with the changes in legislation and requirements for the Police Department and their record keeping, we identified that area, performed some construction, and now we're asking the board for the approval of the purchase for the records clerks to be moved to that area and be working out of. Just again, as a background, the KI Furniture is a member of Sourcewell. So Sourcewell is something that the village utilizes in many occasions for procurement opportunities without the need for competitive bidding, as that it's done by a third party within that organization. Again, this item was budgeted at $60,000 and came in at $50,000, roughly 500, so under budget and looking for approval tonight. If there's any questions, I am happy to answer them at this time.
Did I read this correctly? This is for next year's budget? The money's coming from next year's budget?
Correct. Correct. And there's about a five to six-week lead time, so that was our idea. Basically, the, the space is sitting at idle, ready for that furniture at this time. So we're just trying to stay on par. So that way, when that new fiscal year comes in, the funds will come out of that when the equipment comes in and we'll get it installed and be able to keep things moving along for that staff.
That was my next question was lead time, so, thank you. Any other questions for Director Wolf?
And I will entertain a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Guyer, second by Youngerman. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And that carries. Thank you. Moving on to our final item under separate action is a professional service, services agreement with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $24,895 for Fairfield and Farm and Fleet Lift Station Modifications, Construction Engineering. Director Wolf?
Thank you. At a previous board meeting, there was a contract award to a contractor for the reconstruction or rehabilitation of these two lift stations that serve the community. This is a PSA with EEI for the construction observation, obviously for that work to be taking place. That work is scheduled to be starting up here in the next few weeks. So obviously, looking to execute this contract tonight and keep the ball rolling on that project as well. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Director Wolf? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Guyer, second by Marisack. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And that carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to our one and only item for discussion, fiscal year 2024 budget discussion, enterprise funds. Director Maluski, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just one second to get this all the way up to. There we are. Okay, so once again, we are here. We are finally made it to the end, talking about our enterprise funds today. So as we had the public hearing earlier today and first reading, we anticipate to have the second reading and approval of the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget at the April 24th meeting. So tonight's discussion includes our enterprise funds. So the village currently has three enterprise funds. And for those that may not be familiar with an enterprise funds, they behave similar to a business where revenues are charged primarily for the fees charged for services to cover those expenditures. The village has the water fund, the water improvement fund, and the refuse fund. So as you can see, those revenue sources identified under the appropriate funds there. And the refuse funds is where we do pay for our contract with LRS and collect service, or the fees based off of people's utility bills, bills monthly. So as we move into the revenues, we'll see that collectively our enterprise funds account for 27.4% of the fiscal year 24 recommended budget on the revenue side. We note the breakdown on the slide before you. As I said earlier, generally, the revenues are sourced from fees for services. The only exception we have this year is really our water improvement fund. That $8.6 million includes 2.6 million of grant funding. And we also include $4.2 million in this number for debt issuance. And in a few slides, we'll discuss what these projects are for. So as in prior years, residents can also anticipate an increase in water rates similar to prior years of 5.5%. This will bring water rates to $7.56 per thousand gallons on the June bill for residents. And we will see an increase in August of our garbage rates to $19.64 per month. So moving on to the expenditure side of this, we see that we have 16.5 million in expenses. If water expenditures seem bigger than they have in prior years, it's because they are. So moving forward with this year's budget, we have included a $2 million placeholder for depreciation costs. In prior years, we would not budget for these. We just recognize them as the village prepared our financial statements. We, we believe including these figures in the budget captures the activity accurately as we move into that budget process and accurately reflects the financial statements. We do anticipate to use approximately $3.2 million in fund balance for the water fund this year as well. And like I said, primarily because of that $2 million placeholder that now we're recognizing in the depreciation side of the infrastructure. So we can't talk water without talking about our large project of the Lake Michigan application. So I would like to just remind residents that the village is in the process of securing a new water source for the community. This is by far a huge undertaking for the village, not only from a sustainability impact, but also from a financial impact. A village engineer, Wallers, and EEI have educated us on the village's water infrastructure over the past years as we walk through this journey. Steph has collaborated in numerous ways as we work to reduce our non-revenue water numbers throughout the process. We continue to see the project grow and with, we will see a lot of major projects kicking off with the fiscal year 2024 budget. Oh, we are missing a slide on this. Sorry. Sorry, it looks like one of the slides didn't download, but I believe you do have it in your packets. So the few items that we are anticipating with the Lake Michigan application is $2.9 million investment in the water replacement program, the water main replacement program. This number will continue to grow. We will also have a corrosion study and we will also begin our W, our DWC transmission main project. And as a side note, we'd like to thank U.S. Representative Underwood for securing funding for that corrosion study on behalf of the village. Some smaller but noteworthy items include a rate study and a billing audit. These items help ensure sustainability of the infrastructure and an audit of the billing system, we believe is a prudent measure to ensure the elimination of any billing discrepancies. We also continue our meter replacement program and our Boulder Hill metering district, Boulder Hill District metering project. We also have $946,000 for improvements to our sanitary sewer infrastructure with the Route 25 sub-basin improvements and Fairfield Lift Station improvements. So as mentioned prior, DNR would like the village to replace all of our pre-1970s water main. And these are the mains that have been identified, thank you to EEI, what we would be focusing our program on going forward. And finally, as we conclude this budget presentation, I would like to reflect one more time on the progress on the village's strategic plan. The village's current strategic plan will expire with this budget. We have noted great progress in quality of life, civic engagement, economic development, and professional governance with 78% completion. So we look forward to the adoption of new goals, objectives, and tasks to continue the board's vision. Thank you for the opportunity over the past three meetings to present this budget. And I am available for any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I do have a question, clarification. So the slide with the water main installed before 1970?
Yeah.
The requirement is from the DNR or DWC?
DNR. IDNR is part of the application to give a Lake Michigan application permit.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarification. Excellent. Anyone have any questions for Director Maluski? Okay. So this will be on our next meeting for approval, our actual budget, so. And hopefully, we'll have a full, full, full seat here. Okay, thank you, Director Maluski. Appreciate the information. Okay, moving on to new or unfinished business, I'm going to start to, am I right this time? Dan, anything? Steve? Doug?
Thank you. This was a full agenda tonight for you to be in the hot seat.
There was a lot.
Thank you.
There was a lot. I just wanted to publicly mention and thank Charlene Coulombe. She recently retired from the MEDC, was working there close to 15 years, brought in a lot of business, a lot of development into the Village of Montgomery. brought in a lot of business, a lot of development into the Village of Montgomery. I know there was a really nice press release that went out today, which was just great timing because I had written down on here that I wanted to mention that. But just wanted to publicly thank her and let her know that it's, all of her work was really appreciated. So hopefully, she, I wish her the best of luck in the next chapter and hopefully she rides off into the sunset happy, happy and healthy, so. Future meeting schedule, we, yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes. All right, Chief Smith?
Today, we received a permit request for a parade. We granted it. It's for the VFW. There's an event happening this weekend. I don't know if anybody's aware of it. We have a local resident in town that's turning 100. It's Mr. Richard Miller living on Marsh. He is a World War II POW and Bronze Star recipient. I thought I'd let you guys know this because it's supposed to be beautiful out Sunday and we'll probably have about 100 motorcycles revving through town. They're going to leave the VFW, go over to Broadway, Broadway to Marsh, Marsh to Lincoln, Lincoln back down to Sherman, back to the VFW. Got any questions, let me know. That permit was approved. I figured you want to know now and stuff.
Yes, that's wonderful. That's wonderful to hear that we have that resident, so awesome. Future meeting schedule, you see the meetings there. We are having committee of the whole meeting, correct? Which we haven't had one in a really long time, so just wanted to point that out to everyone. We do not have executive session. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisak. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes. We are adjourned, thank you.